Okay, well, we're gonna call this meeting to order.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order for this committee commission on the social status of African-American males.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Pastor Carol, thank you.
I, Pastor Carol. Okay, who first on the agenda will have roll call? So I will do that. Albertine Allen.
Here.
Pastor Dennis Carroll.
Here.
Where have it, Jacar Williams? Okay. Kenny Fly.
I'm here, I'm here.
Carrie Hogan.
I'm here.
Latanya Troutman. Lester Norvell. Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, she called me and advised that she would not be here at the meeting today. Walter Cox.
Yeah.
Wendell McCollum.
Here.
Awesome. Willie Millsap.
Present.
Nyla Williams, present. Oh, we definitely have a quorum. Okay, moving along. To the December meeting minutes. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review them. Does anyone have any questions or changes or corrections to the meeting minutes?
Motion to accept the treasurer report as written.
Not, not the treasurer's report, the minutes.
The minutes, yes, I'm sorry.
Rodney?
I thought you said trick.
Okay, so Rodney, and is that Walter? Second? Okay, thank you. Okay. Now on to the treasurer's report. I did send out that report to everyone. If anyone has any questions or anything, but it was only one transaction, and that was on December 17th. You know, we as a commission, we had approved for fly high youth services to receive $200 for their Christmas giveaway. So that was deducted out of the account, which leaves us now at $2,098.92.
Motion to the treasurer report as written.
Thank you.
Second.
Who's second?
I did.
Who's I?
McCollum.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. Moving along here. Now the fun part. On to new business. This is the meeting where we'll be voting for the executive members of the commission. I had spoke with Councilwoman Tillman, and she stated that she didn't have any nominations. I think her and Mrs. Allen, or on that committee, Mrs. Allen, did you get any nominations before we take you on the floor?
We didn't get anything. It was Ms. Tillman, Mr. Norvell, and myself, and we didn't get any, uh, anything.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna open it up to the floor.
Point of order.
Excuse me?
Point of order, please.
Yes.
There's a lot, there are a lot of us, our seats are commissioners' seats that are up. Including myself, I think there's several others, but we don't know if we're gonna be here next week or not, or when our term ends, which is this month. I think that we should table this for the fairness of the next, for the next board to come in, and they should be able to pick who they would like to run and to be the executive office holders. I think we would be taken away from them by enforcing, by, by voting on something that some of us might not even be here for the rest of this year. If that makes sense.
I agree with that.
One at a time?
Commissioner McCormick.
Ms. Allen had a question.
Okay, Ms. Allen.
I just made that comment about holding, putting it up. I want you to know who that was.
Commissioner McCormick.
McCormick, okay Rodney, okay. Well, I think everybody is appointed to this commission for a term of two years.
No.
I could be wrong about that, I'm not sure, I'm just asking the question.
Typically.
No.
No, I think.
Most of them, not everybody, but most. But I don't think we can, at this time, postpone it. Who, we have a quorum, and January is when we're supposed to, you know, nominate. Now, there is a couple people, obviously, that did not renew, so they're not a part of this. So whoever's on the commission right now has the authority to vote or nominate someone, and I think we should do that.
I think I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and get this out of the way, so we can start the new year off right. You have enough people that can renew their appointment before the end of the month.
I agree.
Great.
Okay, so, do I have any nominations right now for chairperson?
Point of order, I think that there's a motion, and it was second, I think needs to be a vote.
A vote to do what?
There was a second, there was a.
I made the motion that we delay it. And, uh.
And there was one that said we move forward, and it was second, and we have to have a roll call, vote, please. That's why.
Can we, can we discuss your Commissioner McCormick's motion? And I just wanna clarify, because we know that there are certain ordinances or state codes that state that there has to be certain boards that have officer meetings in January, and I just wanna confirm, do we know that we can postpone our officers' elections until next month? I guess that's the question I would have, cuz I know that many boards, you have to have it done by the first 15 days of the month. Go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
If I may, fellow commissioners, when I was appointed last year, they had one, they, they tried to do an election, and then once I was appointed there a month later, they redid the, they, we didn't do it on the first of the year. We waited, I believe it was late Feb, I think it was either February or March, when we had our official, our official vote. So it was delayed then, and I hope that's, this is something that we can work with Ms. Tillman and trying to make sure that these people like myself, they got one-year terms, that we get them replaced by the, by the end of December, so we can come into this, we won't have this problem again. So we have delayed it in the past, thank you.
Okay, so Nyla, we need to vote on Mr. McCormick's. He put a motion before the floor. And then we need to vote on mine after that.
Okay.
Actually, actually, it was Walter Cox that put the motion before the floor, Mr. McCormick seconded. Okay, Mr. Cox, okay.
Alright, so.
Offer to vote.
Alright. So with Walter Cox's motion to delay, second by Mr. McCormick, we do a roll call. Albertine Allen.
Hey.
Pastor Carol.
Yes.
Kenny Fly. Kenny?
I'm sorry about that, it was on mute. I say yea.
Carrie Hogan.
I say yea.
And Lester Norvell.
Yea.
Yea or nay?
Nay, nay.
Nay, okay. Rodney McCormick.
Yea.
Walter Cox.
Yes, yea.
Wendell McCollum.
Yea.
Willie Millsap. Willie?
I'm sorry, I was on mute, nay.
And Nyla Williams, I say nay. So, let me see. We have. One, three, four, five, six, yea. One, three, and four, nay.
We have six, six yea and four nay.
Correct.
We have four.
Yes. Six to four, so, I guess we will be voting off. Now, can we have some discussion, so the yea's? Got it? So is there be a discussion on here? Cuz I feel as though, you know, people come in at all different times, so you can always try to work things out based on someone's term. That's just for future reference, you know? My term could be two years, this person could just be coming in, so to wait till someone comes in, because you want them to be a part of, you know, a vote on something, I don't think it's fair to the people who have been here, you know, all along for a year or more, but that's just my opinion. And so I guess we will be tabling this when to February, is that the thoughts that you all have?
I gotta say, the motion passed first, Nyla, after we don't have any more comments.
It passed, but I.
It passed, I said it passed, sorry. Excuse me?
Yeah, I think we should, to the legality of, yes, the yea's passed, but are we doing it legally, is it? And I, that should be verified also.
If I may interject, pursuant to Robert Rules of Order, all we have to do is have a motion, second, a vote, and that's how we, we move accordingly. I agree with everything you say, Ms. Williams, but it's also, how about the people that's coming in? Some people might wanna come in with, with the people that's in there, and they might not file. I don't know, but I know this is one thing we can do to correct this problem. We can initiate this at our, at our alleged annual meeting with the council, which I believe is in March, the first meeting of March, and recommend to the council to amend legislation that will make sure that all board members are picked prior to the January 1st year, of the following year, if that makes sense to anyone, thank you.
I have a comment, this is Albertine. I think anybody that, that wants to be on this commission, that don't wanna serve on the board with somebody that's been elected, should find another commission to go to. That shouldn't be the purpose of you coming on the commission. The commission is to help things in the community, not by who's in charge or who's serving in what office. If you all work together, then we can do whatever it is we need to do. It shouldn't be that, well, I don't wanna serve on this commission cuz so-and-so is the vice president or the treasurer. That has nothing to do with the goals and objectives of this commission. We should be about business at hand and getting on with it. Everybody that's on this board now has the chance to go back to the mayor's office or the clerk's office and re-up, because the letters go out. So it would be 99% of the same people on this board that's on here now. That's my opinion, and I think that it states that we should have this done by January, and we should not keep running to the council to change rules and regulations and bylaws. That's what got us into the situation we're in now. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I respectfully agree and disagree with you to, to a degree. I just put out a scenario, just like Mr. Norvell put out a scenario, and I, I, that was just my opinion. I don't know who's not filing, what, and what they're not doing. I reapplied, for some reason, it's taking longer for everybody's application to be heard. I think we can, we can change legislation to make sure that this don't happen again, as opposed to just talking about somebody changing.
About three weeks, Rodney, before you get your paperwork, that's how long it takes me. It's about three weeks before it comes in the mail.
Well, no, I get to vote today, I'm going to day take off.
Yeah, if I can just interject, and I, just be, I'm trying to be respectful to everyone, and listen to everyone. I just think that there are people who don't sign up to be on the social status. But I do wholeheartedly believe the reason why we are in some of the mess that we are in, cuz we don't follow the bylaws and the rules. And, and I know that we gonna, things are getting better, cuz we're making these, now we having discussions.
Alright, so, the motion was passed, but.
Legality.
The, as far as the motion.
Think you need to get guidance from, from somebody at.
We were gonna move forward today on these appointments here. I really wanted that to be done.
How long is it gonna take for us to find out whether or not the delay is legal?
I'm looking at the bylaws, like, right now. But this was not really the time for us to do this, but. Fiscal year should begin January at the end of close.
Robert Rules of Order says, if you follow motion, if anybody, any commissioner can motion, or whatever, and if the majority win, if the majority, the majority will win, and that's the end of discussion, but if somebody wanna bring it up on legality, just contact the sick, their term, and I'm willing, I'm willing to bet my life that I'm correct, but that's, that's here nor there. That's why we have a vote, that's why everybody has a vote, and we didn't do this last year.
What wasn't done last year, Commissioner McCormick?
Yeah, we, we had too many members, is what we had last year.
And then, and then the law, the rules was amended. We also had members who was not residents on our board also. But that's here nor there, I'm not here to rehash and keep rehashing old thinking. I believe wholeheartedly that evolution is gonna take its place, and I'm just ready to move forward. I just, we did, the answer to your question, Mr. McCollum, we, we, they postponed the vote. They post, they postponed the vote, and they changed the voting time. They started off with a vote, then they said that we had to redo it, because we had new board members. So if we can go back to the minutes from the first meeting, second meeting of that year, you will see that, that our chair, our chairperson at the time, Mr. Corley, definitely postponed the vote, nobody said nothing about it. Seemed like when certain people speak, there's disagreements. I'm done.
Okay. Alright. So, let's move on. Motion was passed, and I'm, I, if it's my understanding, this will pick up next month? Is that what the motion was stated? Is that, Mr. Cox?
The motion was just for us to table it.
Okay.
But when I made the motion, I was not aware that there could be a violation of the rules.
I don't think it, that is that.
I still feel it, we should hold off on the vote, if that, if that's legal.
Okay. The table will bring it back up.
How about next meeting, please?
It was postponed because we had too many members on the board, the board wasn't structured correctly.
And I wanna just, I seen you keep rehashing that, Mr. Norvell. I'm a firm believer in, in our constitution and following the rules. I don't, I don't, I don't do stuff by phone calls. I was put off the board after being on the board for six months, and I stepped down, didn't say nothing, and then the legislators changed, amended the ordinance and, and straightened it out. I don't, why we keep rehashing something that's no longer?
Yeah, well, we don't have to, Mr. McCormick. So, we got it, passed, the motion passed, it's tabled to, you know, the next meeting. So I guess I will be continuing on as interim chair, and we're gonna move on with the agenda, okay?
I'll be the board president.
So you should've said that in the beginning.
Thank you, you just spoke up.
Right. I could've been done. Alright, on to old business, the bylaws. The bylaws was sent with some corrections with them, so I don't know if everybody had a chance to review them, but after speaking with Councilwoman Tillman, the council will be meeting on the bylaws, I think it's the third reading, on the 18th, so this is something else that needs to be tabled. Until then, but we can have a discussion around it, and one of the main pieces of this was the, the wording on whether or not they should be a bona fide LaPorte County resident or Michigan City resident. It's a bylaw state right now, it has LaPorte County, so do we have any questions?
I think we should leave it at LaPorte County, and there's a reading on the 18th of this month, third reading, so. I just, is that what you just said?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to table this, and if the city council make a decision, cuz it will be a big impact on our bylaws. So motion to table, table it until the city council make a decision, which will be the 19th or 18th?
I think, I think her email she sent today said the 18th. But, you know, I think as a commission, that we all need to be discussing these things and not allow the, the council to dictate everything that we're doing on this commission. It's like, we, we have these things set up, and then it goes to the, the council, they come back and tell us what we should be doing, we don't have no input on it. This is your time to share your opinions or input as to how this commission should be made up. I mean, I, I think it should be LaPorte County, cuz that would definitely eliminate, you know, a lot of people. Even though these people work in Michigan City, even though they, they do all their business in Michigan City, help the community of Michigan City, but because they're right across the stream of Trail Creek or something, that they cannot be a part of this. That is my opinion, and I would like to hear from, you know, the rest of you.
Okay, this is Ms. Allen again. I think it should've stayed the way it was in the first place. It said LaPorte County, that encompasses Trail Creek, Edgewood, whatever little suburb, Potawatomi Park. That encompasses everybody, Doolan Park, all of whatever that is, the, the limits for the LaPorte County. If you work, live, or whatever, you should be able to serve the community. Now, I, I don't think we need to just eliminate it to Michigan City, because we do other things other than in this little area of Michigan City.
That is correct.
There are people that live on Springland, over in Potawatomi Park. But do we go there and ask them to help us with things? Yes.
I don't know, my hand is up.
Yes. Mr. McCormick, he, Mr. McCormick had his hand up.
I will pass it to Mr., Pastor Carol, for him to go ahead, I can wait, Ms. Williams, thank.
Uh huh. Yeah, my question is, is if I wanted to go on the Long Beach Township Council, being from Michigan City, could, could I do that?
No.
No?
No.
If you, repeat that again, please.
If he live in Michigan City, and he wants to go and serve on Long Beach Council, can he do that?
No, he can't, no, he can't, just like, I can't serve on the Michigan City Council.
Correct.
Well, that, thank you, I just wanted that clarified, thank you so much.
Okay. I already said.
Since we're having this discussion, I mean, it's an opportunity for us to be, I mean, we can't really speak for what happens on those other commissions. We have an opportunity to set the route for our commission, and is it something that we're able to vote on? Commissioner Williams, as far as where this commission's in? On LaPorte County versus, you know, whatever else the localized idea they're trying to do?
Absolutely.
Anybody just agree, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Fly, excuse me.
Kenny?
This is my turn?
Okay.
You say yes?
Yes.
Alright, my, my input on this situation, I'm kinda right in about a, probably 60/40. Reason is 60/40 is because naturally, if this commission was made up of Michigan City residents and a commission of Michigan City.
No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't, sped up LaPorte County.
I'm asking you, yeah, I was asking if it was, you know, like, if it was, like, say the name of it. Alright, the name of it, social status for Michigan City males, whatever.
Michigan City status, yeah.
Right, right, that's just is what it is, bro. But what I'm saying is.
You're muted.
What I'm trying to say is, have it ever been the rules to be just Michigan City? Or, or was the last rule had the county included? What was the rule, can I just know the rule it was before we finna do all this? What is the rule now?
LaPorte County.
LaPorte County, right?
Yes.
Okay, so nobody was on the board illegally, or wasn't supposed to be on the board, and none of those things that lived outside of Michigan City, right?
As far as I know, from all the years that I've been on here, it's been that way. And it's been a long time.
Right, right, well, you know, on this situation, you know, I'm abstaining from everything right here, because either or, either way, still stuff got to get done, you know? I don't really rap too much, I, I take action, so, you know, we sit on these boards, and we, you know, discuss, deliberate, rebuttal, but when it come down to action and getting out here, you know? It's, it's like, you know, I just, I just abstain on it, and let me know when we ready to go to work.
How was eliminating members of the council gonna help that? How is eliminating members gonna help go into action? I guess my question in all this is, other than personally not liking people that don't live, you know, with every area you think deems fit, how does it help the African-American males in our community to eliminate members from this committee? It's like, please explain to me how that, how it helps them personally to get rid of resources?
I had my name, I had my hand up for quite a while now, but.
Okay, Mr. McCormick.
I don't think getting rid of anyone should be the solution to anything. To be quite frank, handing out flyers or what other individuals do doesn't do nothing for the black males of our community either. But when we take, but, I mean, no, no, please, I didn't interrupt no one, I just like the same courtesy.
That's right, go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
When, when, when we have, you, we first gotta understand that we take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Indiana, and our, and also the, our legislators, which is the, the ordinances that's been passed. That's, we're governed by the city council rules. In order for us to move forward, we cannot be in conflict, conflict with, with Indiana State or city ordinances. And, by the way, this ordinance was passed, the MUNICO was passed a while ago. I, I, I wanna just take a guess, about six or seven years ago, but somebody, when they passed the ordinance, they forgot to take out LaPorte County bona fide members of LaPorte County. If you read the MUNICO, you'll see somebody made a mistake, so the city council is correcting that mistake. So the city council is correcting that mistake. Um, taking someone off is not, this shouldn't be what this, this shouldn't be what this is about. Because when the rules was, one of the things that irks me the most out of this, this board is that when you don't like an individual, you're trying tooth and nail to enforce a rule to try to get rid of that person. And I was a victim of that, and I didn't have, I didn't have sore loser or cry about it or run around hooping and hollering about it. I just got off the board and waited until it was properly amended. And, and I followed the right standard, right now, why we can't follow the right standard? Why should we be upset of, of because that's just a rule? And let's just entrust in our city council that they're gonna rectify the problem. If they don't rectify, how about just run for office? But don't pick and choose when we going to enforce rules. As black people, and me as a black man, I've been having to face this same uphill battle. And now I'm dealing with my own people on this. None of y'all spoke up when I was put off the board, matter of fact, the majority of you was trying to get me off the board on a, on a technicality. I didn't hear that argument, Mr. Hogan, because you wasn't there, and I tried to send you a letter to tell you that. I'm not personally attacking you, but you didn't know the outcome, you didn't know all the ins and outs, so that's all I wanna add to it.
Okay.
I have another meeting I have to go to, but can I? That was changed without the, without the commission knowing. You know, it didn't come to the commission and we have a vote or talk about it, it was just changed, and that what, that is what was wrong.
Yes.
That's why people objected, we didn't know until it was done. Nobody came to the council or to the commission and said, this is what we're gonna do, or is this your pleasure? They just did it, and that is not the way you do business.
That.
It was three readings, there was three week.
City Hall, you need to come to the commission with your stuff that you're gonna change.
Why are we not allowed to just vote on this as a commission?
Yes.
Other than Rodney McCormick being upset that it may have happened to him, why are we not allowed to vote on this as a?
Nothing's preventing you, nothing's preventing you from doing it.
We, we can, and that, that information can be um shared with, with the council. So if you would like to make a vote right now.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, make a motion.
That we keep the ordinance as it was originally written and not the change that has, that they're wanting to put in place. LaPorte County is what I wanted to stay as, because we utilize services all over the county, not just Michigan City.
And LaPorte County council should have a right to bring, they should have people, they should be able to appoint people from the county, from the county on the board, which I agree. But we should not be picking, Michigan City should not be county residents. The residents should be picked by LaPorte County Council, or maybe even the LaPorte Commissioners.
That's getting too deep.
Hey, let me remind everyone now, um people, we are, we on a, we on public eye right now. You know, I did it a couple of times and apologized and stuff, so I just want ones to know that, you know, people, as ones on the council that's gonna say, look at our meeting and watch how they acting, you know, and I didn't like how that happened, but no. You know, I, I know ones would say, go back and look at the previous meeting, you know, so we gotta kind of we know, we got an extra eye out there on us, whether it's good or bad, okay?
I'm not gonna take back anything I had, I'm not gonna do it.
Yeah, yes, we do, we have a motion on the floor, so, a second?
There was another, there was also another motion before that. A motion to table this until the council may, that's the first thing I said, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, he'll do it in the right way, my, he had, Rodney had a motion on the floor first.
Yes, I.
Everybody just.
Rodney, make your motion again.
Yes, please, no one else speak, thank you.
I motion to table this until we hear the ruling that's made by the, by the uh Michigan City Commissioner, I mean, um common council. Because this is a very, this will impact us, if they change the law, we got to change our bylaws, because it would be in direct conflict. And that's, and that's legal standing, thank you.
A second? Who is that?
Walter Cox, this is the motion.
Motion is to table the uh the bylaws until after the um common council meet on the eighteen, is that correct, Mr. McCormick?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you understand, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
You still second? Well, call Aberdeen Allen?
No.
Pastor Carroll?
Yes.
Kenny Fly?
Yes, well, I table it again, yes.
Carrie Hogan?
No.
Lester Norvell?
No.
Rodney McCormick?
Yes.
Walter Cox? Wendell McCollum?
No.
Willie Millsap?
No.
Nyla Williams, I say no too. All right, so. We have one, two. All right, um there's six, six no's, four yes. For the no's, um.
So what, we one and one now, we gotta do a tiebreaker.
No, we're not gonna keep this going, okay? So the motion fails, okay?
Miss Allen has a motion for now.
Okay.
So much, what was my motion, Rodney?
Your motion was to, to, as written, as bona fide Michigan, LaPorte, LaPorte residents.
Okay, I wanna keep the ordinance, I wanna, I make a motion that we keep the ordinance as it was originally with LaPorte County, not Michigan City residents, that's my motion.
Second. Yeah.
Second, is that Millsap?
Norvell.
Norvell. Okay. Here we go, and y'all really putting me to work today, I'm telling you. Okay, all right, to go down, um Tiny Allen?
Yes.
Okay, uh Dennis Carroll?
Yes.
Kenny Fly?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Carrie Hogan?
Yes.
Lester Norvell?
Yeah.
Rodney McCormick?
No.
Walter Cox?
Yeah.
Wendell McCollum?
Yes.
Willie Millsap?
Yes.
And Nyla Williams, yes, so. Eight, yay, two, no. So the yays have it. Motion passes, so now um what we need to do is get the information to um Councilwoman Casey Tillman so she can present this to the, the council of our you know, interest in what we would like to have, so.
I think also it needs to go to the secretary.
We had a secretary.
No.
To the clerk's office, to the clerk's office.
The clerk's office. And it, and it needs to be in writing.
Yes. And just for all the commissioners uh information, just so you got, everybody knows, it's up for third reading. Please, don't be a stranger, show up at the council meeting and voice your opinion, please. You dislike it or you like it, just please voice your opinion, because we gotta follow their law. We can't make up our own laws, that, that's, we can't do that, so just please show up.
Okay. Good point. All right, people. Let's see where we are here. But I would suggest to if everybody please uh look over the bylaws, because there were some other things in there as well. You know, there were some other um changes. So please, if you have not, to review them as soon as you can.
I'm confused right now, if I may, are we doing, are we gonna agree on the bylaws today, or are we having conversation about the bylaws? I don't, I'm not for sure.
My motion was to accept the bylaws as the original bylaws.
No, you just said the residents side, there's a lot of changes. Because.
You'll vote on the.
That was the only change that I motioned, but I don't, I didn't take, take any other one.
Yeah, because I read the by, there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes to the bylaws. If anybody didn't read it, or should we give everybody time to read it and come back the next meeting, or do, deal with it right now?
Everybody, has everybody read it? Does anyone have any questions on it? Do you need more time? Because we do need to vote on the bylaws.
Let's not put it off.
They have been sent out several times throughout the year.
Sure, yes.
Well, you start with number one, I mean, you can't be on here all day.
Right.
Right.
Start with number one and do what we can do.
I, I, I just wanna argue, I just wanna say one thing about the bylaws, since we voted this way. We need to remove the word MC, Michigan City. We need, I, I motion that we remove, I do not agree with the bylaws by naming us the Michigan City uh social status, we should be the LaPorte County social status.
Okay.
Take the specific name out of it.
Do we actually have to vote on that, or is that something that uh, is that just a statement?
I, I just thought, I just said motion.
Admit it, we're gonna go and nitpick and go through every part of this and changes, because you guys have seen this, these bylaws. They've been out here for a while, and now are we gonna take the time and go through each line item here on this meeting to say whether or not we, we need to change this, we need to change that? I mean, come on. That doesn't align with the ordinance. So you can't change the name.
The name was changed.
It was really the Commission on the Social Status of African American Males, that was the original name.
Yeah.
It has to be changed.
I don't know.
It has to be changed in the ordinance, so we cannot make the motion to, you know.
You just did it, you just.
But we started out with Commission on Social Status of African American Males, it was not Michigan City. I've been on there too long, it started out Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. I don't know.
I agree with you, Miss Allen, because they changed the residency part, so they went and changed this name to Michigan City, and that was part of our bylaws amendment, and now we're saying that we can't just amend stuff, or we can't make our own rules, but then you just, I don't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Does anybody wanna second uh changing the name, voting on changing the name, if possible?
I make a second, who, who made the motion? Mr. McCormick made the motion, I, I second it, I second it, let's get through.
I don't think we are gonna get through.
No, we're not gonna get through this, and not, we're, we're not going to, there's not, no, you won't do it with me, I know that, so. Not today.
Right, this is, I think, um, well, now you have motion.
Well, we have the motions, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't think we should be doing this right now, it is too much.
I don't think we're supposed to, but you know, it is, it's just too much, but you know, sense is out there.
Take down my motion at this time, I just take my motion down.
Thank you, Rodney.
Okay, this still needs to be a discussion, so we can um again.
Put it on the agenda for next month.
Put it on the agenda for next month, and everybody has a chance to review, make suggestions, questions. And so we're not taking this time up in the meeting to be discussing the bylaws, which should have been um reviewed and discussed prior to now. The only thing was the LaPorte County um residents, um which, you know, that would affect, you know, so many people um on the commission, but all these other changes and, and ideas, I think um table it to uh the next meeting.
To move, or motion to move on.
My thoughts exactly.
Bylaws have to be addressed at some.
Yes, just like the nominations, but we're not doing the things that we're sitting here on. You know, we wanna push everything to the side and keep moving on and on, we should have had the that.
Everybody, everybody read, everybody didn't read the, the bylaws, and maybe we, now we know we gonna, we gonna deal with this one way or the other, next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, let's table this. Okay.
You're down to subcommittee report now.
I know, yeah, I know, subcommittee. Um, education. For education?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna share, just in, in terms of general announcements, that the school system and partnership with Health Link is holding a vaccination clinic at Joy Elementary next Thursday at three fifteen. Uh, appointments are recommended, uh but walk-ins are welcome. And if you wanna make an appointment, you can call two one nine eight seven two six thousand, extension thirty four hundred. Um, and that's for anyone that's five and older. Also, um as I've said in the other meetings that I've been involved with here, that uh our schools are always in need of volunteers, uh especially at the mi- elementary and middle school level, and especially black males. And as we know, um if you've been in any of our schools, and probably any school, no matter if it's an urban, suburban, or rural area, very few black males are in those buildings. Uh, so as much as possible, um we're open and wanting to support our students and have them see uh black males within the school building, um not just without, outside the school building. So whether it's thirty minutes or an hour, or how many, uh, how many minutes you can support uh the schools, uh please contact one of our twelve buildings, um, um and speak to the principals about how you can be involved with our students. And just like many other businesses and industries, school system is looking for people who wanna work. Uh, transportation, food service, substitute teaching, teaching, support staff positions, whether it's paraprofessional instructional assistants or secretaries, uh there are opportunities available. So I just wanted to share that.
Wendell, can I ask you a question? I missed the date for the shot.
It is next Thursday, January twentieth, from three fifteen to six fifteen.
What time?
Three fifteen to six fifteen.
And that's at Joy School?
Yes.
And if you make an appointment, you, you call?
Two one nine eight seven two sixty two hundred, extension thirty four hundred.
Thank you, Wendell.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Wendell.
Hello, I would like to speak on the educational side, as I'm a subcommittee member on education, also fly high youth um after school program starting next week, and we do have some openings, maybe six or seven openings. So if you guys know any kids that need any after school tutoring, helping homework, or anything like that, you can refer them to um Fly High Youth Services. We have a um Fly High Youth page, they can contact us on, or they can reach us at two one nine two one zero six zero one one. God bless.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, health?
I don't have anything, Nyla.
Me neither, I've been self quarantining, um.
Yeah.
I can tell you, everybody, please stay, stay well, stay safe. Um, this virus is, doesn't seem to be going anywhere anytime soon. If you haven't been vaccinated, try to get vaccinated, boost it. You haven't been vaccinated, try to get vaccinated, boosted, all of that.
Wear your, remember to wear your mask.
And yes, the the mask. And they're really suggesting, you know, the, go back to the um N ninety five mask now to be this new, um those new variants that are out right now. So and I don't have anything at the moment. I'm still working on on our strategic plan and we'll be getting that out probably in February. And starting programming. It really depends on the uh, you know, the COVID nineteen and the surge, so. I'll keep you guys updated. All right, moving on, um employment.
Yes, Nyla, uh uh nothing at this time. However, uh Miss uh Carrie, I would get in touch with you offline so we can pick up where we left off at on the pre-application workshop.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh I have to, just full disclosure, uh while we're talking, I have to avoid crowds for a little while. Um we'll talk about it, but I I am.
Okay, I get it.
Okay, we'll talk.
I get in touch with you offline. Okay, thank you.
Um criminal justice. I don't know if we have anyone else that was on this subcommittee for criminal justice. Okay, um and social factors, those were the two that um it was John and Marty, I believe. So is anyone else on those committees? You have an update?
Criminal justice, I'm on a subcommittee also. Um we haven't met, so we haven't, we was trying to get some meeting dates and times and that didn't take place. That's all I can report.
Okay. All right, for the order, um the mayor looking for appointments, so if anyone has any suggestions or ideas for justice and the other would be from the Neighborhood Association, um please refer them to the mayor's office or inform the mayor that you have some suggestions on those uh two mayor appointments. Um I don't know if we have any public comment this time. Anyone on for the public have any comments?
Thing for the good of the order, I'd like to introduce my, our new executive director.
Okay. All right, hello.
New executive director and her name is Keisha Ward. You can introduce yourself, Keisha.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I I'm thinking I know almost everybody on this call. Um but if I don't know you, like again, Keisha Ward, I'm a local person, born and raised right here. Um Elston graduate, IU graduate, and um have a social work background and I'm glad to be here, hope help in any way. Um greetings.
Congratulations, Keisha. Wonderful.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Does anyone else have any um public comment?
I just have a comment. Uh I I truly believe that we can come together in unity in this new year and uh have a board that's gonna stand and uh uh do the right things and and work together, all of us working together. And not so much uh trying to fight each other about some issues. Um I know we have our disagreements on some things, but I also believe that we can be a strong board by coming into unity. And so that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Carol. I totally agree. We may not agree with everything, but at the end of the day, it's all about respect. Respect to each other's opinions and feelings moving forward. Um hopefully we'll get this um commission organized with these new um new members and these bylaws. We need to get it together. That's all I'm gonna say. So I appreciate you all. Um this has been an interesting day. I thought I was gonna be done right after the nominations, but see, that did not happen. See how I just moved with the flow? Thank you very much. So, our next meeting will be February ninth, twenty twenty two at twelve P M. And we'll get that information.
I make a motion that we adjourn, girl.
Okay, that was a lot of seconds, who?
Please read the bylaws.
Who was the second? Just anybody?
I, Kenny Fly, oh Rodney McCormick.
Kenny Fly don't make a difference.
Okay, Rodney, got you as a second. All right, thanks everyone. Have a wonderful day.
Stay safe.
Please read the bylaws. Be blessed. Hey, Pastor Carol.
Hey. Have a good day, my friend.
You too. Congratulations, Keisha.